Good morning, and we'll go ahead and get started with our Benton County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, May 5, 2020. So we'll start with introductions in the room here. I'm Pat Malone, Commissioner. Joe Kirby, County Administrator.
Bill Hargit.
Lilia Neville, Board of Commissioners.
All right.
Dan Ojero, Commissioner.
Jen Brown, Sustainability Coordinator.
Sean McGuire, Sustainability Program.
Lisa Farley, Board of Commissioners.
Bill Hargit, Environmental Health.
Michael Gardner-Brown, Climate Action Intern.
Welcome.
Greg Riddler, Sheriff's Office.
Okay.
Eric Camilo, Board of Commissioners Recorder.
Okay, that looks like everybody. Do we have any announcements? Hearing none. We have any comments from the public? All right, the public will have another opportunity at 11 o'clock for our public hearing. Review and approve the agenda.
Commissioners, I have one small edit to the agenda this morning. The first work session item lists Greg Ferret and Sean McGuire as the lead presenters. The change that I have is that Sean McGuire is still lead presenter, but myself and Jen Brown will also be participating, as well as Michael Gardner-Brown as needed.
And so Greg will not be part of that, or?
Greg might jump onto the meeting to listen, but he is not a presenter.
Great. Any other additions or corrections to the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on to Item 4, Chair Decisions, and there have not been any chair decisions since our last Thursday meeting. So we'll jump right into Item 5, the Work Session, an update on greenhouse gas emissions, and go over the lineup again. Sean McGuire, Lilia, Jen Brown, and, oh, I've got something right in front of Michael's name, but.
Gardner-Brown.
Welcome. Someday I'll figure out how to get rid of "You're muted" there, but it keeps popping back. So why don't you head us off, Sean, and we've got, like to get finished with the presentation by about 10 o'clock, and so we have time for some questions, because we're on a pretty tight schedule this morning with the public hearing.
You got it, Commissioner. Thank you. Well, thank you all very much. One briefing up front, we are going to upload the presentation that we have to our website. For those of you in the public that are hearing, watching this on Facebook, we'll have that later this morning on our website at co.tenton.org.us, and just search for greenhouse gas and you'll get to our updated website. So without that, I'm going to switch over to share screen and start the presentation. And here we go. So hopefully that came through.
That came through.
Okay. So thank you all. We are going to, this is our annual update of the greenhouse gas emissions inventory, as well as other activities moving on from our climate action activities. So wanted to walk through the big topics that we're going to have today. One, we're going to have our updated inventory with 2019. That will be a block of the presentation. We'll also be looking at specifically, for the first time, we are enjoying emission reductions from renewable energy sources. Then we're going to, Lilia's going to be discussing how we're aligning all of our different plans together, as well as Jen Brown talking about a lot of the successes that the county has enjoyed over the past year. Then we're going to come back to a couple of projects that we discussed at our December 10 goal-setting meeting. One is the carbon capture from county-owned lands, as well as the greenhouse gas reduction calculator that myself and Michael Gardner-Brown, who is our Climate Action Intern, worked on. So without further ado, let's get going. So we'll start with our goals. This was created, signed a resolution earlier this year, which is February, which oddly feels like years ago, but that was updated from a goal that was established in 2018 by resolution. Our new goal states that we need to be at 50% of our greenhouse gas emissions based on 2010 levels by 2030 and be net zero by 2050. We're going to walk through what that's going to take. You would ask again on December 10th on some of the ways that we need to do things to get to that goal. Then we start looking at the deliverables that was established by your resolution in 2017, that is to track our monthly resource use, which we do, check late emissions from that resource and present to you, which is why we're here today, develop a climate action goal to achieve it. We'll be reviewing that later today, and then publish the emissions inventory via website, which I mentioned will be uploaded later today. So a quick background on what the inventory actually is. We, to be crystal clear, our inventory focuses on our resource use only from public work facilities, and that is electricity, fleet fuel, natural gas, and water. For the first time, we have also added this year waste, and we're going to dive into all five of those resource uses, specifically in the following slides. The reason why we're saying this is this does not include fairgrounds or natural areas and parks. We have, we have been trying to do this. We're hopeful that bringing on an intern or assistance to bring it, it's just, it's laborious to go back, get all the information entered into the data. Right now, we work with IT and our public works. It's a really nice flow. Many thanks to Tally and IT to take the extra time to build this resource use inventory, which makes it a lot easier for us to develop the greenhouse gas inventory. Quick assumptions. This is, we are very confident in the data, but obviously nothing is absolute. One of the biggest challenges we have is it's not like bills start on January 1st and end on December 31st cleanly, or Keith and Fleet go out to their odometers on December 31st and write that down each and every time. It's just sometimes there's some overlap, for instance, especially with our compactor or waste compactor that is being picked up when it's full. Sometimes it's late as February, sometimes it's January, so again, there's some overlap. We're going to highlight some of the data challenges that we have as we move forward, but we just want to make sure that we are confident, but there's always, nothing is perfect. So let's dive into our greenhouse gas inventory. So I want to stay on this slide for a little bit and walk everyone through. First, for those of you, I'm sure most people are knowledgeable of this, but just to be crystal clear, if you see my mouse there, MT CO2E equals, means metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalents. Again, carbon dioxide is not our only greenhouse gas. There's others, but we can normalize that into a single number. So on all these slides, you're going to see this MT CO2E. So that's number one. Number two is, for the first time, this word net. From 2018 and before, whatever our emissions were from our resource use, that was our emissions. But as we're going to specifically address later on, this is the first year where we can actually start deducting our greenhouse gas because of the purchasing and use of renewable energy. So this is our net emissions. You can clearly see a pretty big uptick, and we're going to dive into that later on. Third thing I want to comment on is, again, because of the resolution that you signed earlier this year, previously we had to go back to 1990 as the base level, which, again, extrapolation and a lot of guessing. Now that we only have to go back to 2010, we are very confident in that number, and now we can start identifying very specific target dates and very specific actions we can take, and that gets us back to the calculator, which we'll end the presentation on. Lastly, the last two years, we have tried to figure out why this huge drop in 2015. Again, Michael and Arson looking into it, we're confident that number is. We don't know why it dipped so much, but everyone's aware you're just going to get an anomaly. We're going to continue to figure out why that is so low. So this is our emissions. We're going to keep coming back to this slide and these numbers. Another way to look at it, though, is by FTE. So what we did was we took the emissions and put them in by FTE. Back in 2010, we had about 429 FTE according to Finance Department. Now we have about 484. So even though, yes, we have increased slightly, our per ton per FTE has actually decreased. You're going to see this, excuse me, you're going to see this uptick on most of the slides. That's because we brought Sunset in in around 2011, 2012, and so you're going to see a continued uptick. Along about this, when you look at the number of FTEs, we increased slightly, and then with a little bit of a decrease, so that's why you see this kind of gentle slide. So this is showing you that, yes, our emissions have gone up a little bit, but in terms of the increase FTE, 55, we are decreasing in total. Of note, we did try to do this with square footage. It's a little complicated, and the next couple of slides I'm going to show you, we have the big numbers, Sunset, Avery, Levee, and those. The tougher ones are when we come into the apartments, the block where the print shop is. It was very difficult for Paul to get all these facilities to get the square footage, plus we don't have county employees there, and so it was a little bit, wasn't that insightful. So we can do it by building, though, if you can do it later in analysis. So here is our emissions by source. You can see, obviously, the biggest emitter is from fleet fuel. This accounts for about 52% of our total emissions, and we're going to be walking through all five of these as we move forward and dive into each one, not only now, but casting back to 2010. This is our emissions change from 2018 to 2019. You will see that we decreased across the board except for fleet fuel. We're going to talk more about that in a couple more slides. So we decreased our, by 5.7 in our electricity, 3.5 by natural gas. We're going to talk more specifically about water. Yes, it decreased by almost 23%, but we need to address that specifically, and waste by about a half percent. Why I'm showing you this is to highlight the difference between resource use and emissions. So electricity, again, for the first time, we are enjoying reducing our emissions because of the purchase and use of solar panels. That's why on this slide you see our emissions decrease by 5.7, our actual usage decreased by 1.5. That's because of the offsets. Similarly, we look at fleet and fuel, our resource use decreased by 21%, our emissions by 29%. This is because when you start diving into the data, the resource use is by number of gallons. Well, that could be diesel, that could be gasoline, propane, some of the, some of the law enforcement still has propane in it, and so that's the usage. Each of those have a different emitting coefficient of carbon, and so last year we actually used more gasoline than our renewable diesel, which is why you had an increase in emissions higher than actual usage. These are some of the details, the data that we get, especially from the new database from Keith and Fleet, so we can really start to pinpoint, again, what's the biggest bang for the buck? How can we hit those ones that we really need to hit? This is our emissions by facility. Again, you can see at the bottom here, if you can see my mouse, this blue line is Sunset coming on, but the big ones are Avery and law enforcement. The main reason for this is that's where fleet is assigned to. So Avery, the only two places that we really have assigned fleet is either Avery or law enforcement, plus the law enforcement building is on Moore. So those two will always be the highest emitters. So that gives us an overview. Now we want to get into each of the five specific emission sources. Before we do, I wanted, that was a lot of information. I didn't know if anyone had any questions. So let's go one by one. For electricity, you will see that we have, again, here's that uptick from Sunset and then a steady decrease. Two things. We do enjoy a steady decrease. Our facilities are doing a great job, and Jen is going to be talking a lot about what facilities has done over the past year and earlier, what we are going to do to continue this trend of a downward slide of electricity use. What I want to highlight, though, is this number right here, the 586.3. Again, that is the net emissions. If you take out the solar, then it is actually, we actually emitted 608 tons. We have a specific slide to start highlighting exactly where those savings are, but again, this is our net. I keep highlighting this because as we purchase more and as we install more solar panels or, I should say, renewable energy sources, we're going to see that number go down even Here is our fleet fuel, and this is why, again, with 52% of our total emissions coming from this one resource use, this is the challenge. So what we saw last year was an increase both in vehicles, but more importantly, fuel use, which is what's driving this number upward. And so when you start seeing that 29% increase, that is where this is coming from. This is the area, obviously, that we need to highlight. It also showcases that when we start looking at the big picture, we are not, we're not a huge emitter of emissions, which means that these small little things, relatively small, increased cars, increased driving, has a huge impact on our greenhouse gas emissions. So we were talking about this yesterday, for instance, go-to work and teleworking. These really offset this specific source a lot, and talking to my colleagues at OSU and Corvallis and I don't know if you have the school district, beforehand, we were talking that either teleworking or this wasn't a normal job. There was always reticence from either managers or others. Now, because of COVID, this has become a little more of a standard, and we're hoping that, and you, I know that Joe, you've commented this on the last two town halls, that this will continue. Hopefully, the reduction of us having to drive will bring this down. Secondly, especially from our health department has commented on numerous occasions that this is, yes, it's a greenhouse gas. It's also a time efficiency standard of them driving to all the different health centers. So again, much of what we talk about is resource efficiency. Greenhouse gases, yes, also our time. So there's a lot of things unpacked in here, but we wanted to highlight that this is where that big increase in greenhouse gas emissions is coming from. Greenhouse gas and natural gas. At first, this is kind of scary that we're kicking up. Actually, I talked to Chris Bieleberg, our facilities manager, years ago. This is a good thing to have. What happened was we replaced some oil-burning boilers with natural gas. Oil burning is considerably a higher carbon intensity than natural gas, so that's why we see this kind of uptick from 2015 to 2016. However, as we'll comment later on, facilities have done a good job of really making our facilities more energy efficient, which is why you see that downtick from 2018 to 2019. Next is water. What we have in water here, this is an issue more of scale. Yes, it's bouncing around. The challenge, though, is when you look at what this actually, 11.4 tons from water, that's, we used about 5.1 million gallons last year. In comparison, Corvallis used about 70 million, and OSU used about 251 million. If we put this on a similar scale, this would be a flat line. I am not saying, please don't insinuate that, that we do not have opportunities to reduce our water use, but we don't do a whole lot, talking to natural areas and parks, we don't do a whole lot of irrigation, we don't have a whole lot of public libraries in these where we're using a lot of water from the public. It is something we can continue to reduce, but in the grand scheme, that's why it's kind of bouncing around on this scale. And lastly, we have waste, and we're going to stay on this slide for a little while because it's the first time that we've included this. So what we have on this line, the compactor came online in mid-2014. Why we needed the compactor is because what, the only way that you calculate our greenhouse gas emissions is by tonnage or by weight. So this is one, the compactor, now that Avery's complex, all of our office trash is put in the compactor, and then facilities calls public service, and they take it up and they weigh it. That's how we can get the actual tonnage from these sources. Because beforehand, it was more of them just picking trash up, we didn't have any weight, we had to extrapolate backwards. So what we did is took our total tonnage from 2015, calculated per FTE, and backcasted to 2010. It's really about, the only way we could have really done it was so little years. The other thing I want to comment on is 2017, that big uptick. What we are, what I'm thinking is that that is because of the construction over Avery. Yes, the construction company that you see has their own, but either furniture being replaced or other materials just finding its way into the compactor, that's why it was upticked. One last comment about waste is that this is not just our office waste. In talking to facilities, if a roads crew picks something up off the road, or machinery or anything else, that also goes into the compactor. And so, yes, we are doing a great job, Jen and facilities are doing a great job of reducing our waste in our offices. There's other things that go into the compactor that will be included in this figure. So I want to stop there for a moment. Again, that was a lot of information, and want to know if there were any questions.
Sean, Commissioner Ojero has a question.
Yes.
Thank you. Back to water for a moment. I understand that on the scale of OSU or the city of Corvallis, that the power variability is just noise, but we're not OSU or the city, so it would be helpful to understand what underlies some of that variability and perhaps to take a look at whether we're irrigating more in those years or what might have been driving the issue. And again, that really huge uptick might just have been the Sunset acquisition, I don't know, but I hate to leave it at just that it's noise.
Oh, I'm sorry. If I insinuate that, that wasn't my point. It was to put it into context. I agree with you, water obviously is a huge issue for us, and we are going to continue to produce that and assist in facilities and other ways. It was only a matter of context, and we have a long way to go, a lot of things to do to reduce the water use.
And the other point I wanted to, or question I wanted to ask is that you made a point earlier that these are net emissions, but it wasn't labeled as such on the slide where you were referring to that. We want to make sure that we're labeling things accurately.
On the first one, yes. I'm going to dive a little bit more into detail later in the presentation to really dive into what we may find out, but I will do.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure that when we do put it up on the website, that it's accurately labeled.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Sean, I have a question. Is it accurate to say, now that you've done all this homework, going back and figuring out where the, how to get accurate data, that going forward, this tracking will be quite a bit easier?
Right now, we have two sources of our data. One is the resource use tracking. What happens is that public works, specifically Tally, goes in, when she enters in the bills to pay for, she also enter in the actual units, whether that's gas, whether that's kilowatt-hours, all of that. We're fine-tuning how to have that database be more easily accessible, whether that's on the website or by use by facilities. The second one is our fleet, and I want to take a moment here to say thank you to the commissioners, thank you to budget, Joe, whomever, who really let Keith have that database. That is going to fundamentally change how we do our greenhouse gas emissions. As Michael is all too familiar, as well as colleagues for him last year, Maura and Jane in the previous four years, by far the biggest time use is to go and with the fleet database. We had to go car by car, vehicle by vehicle, everything, and that's a huge labor. With the new database system that fleet will have, it's going to be much easier, much quicker for us to find our greenhouse gas inventory, to publicize that, to do a lot of things. So again, kind of getting into comparison, unfortunately, my colleague at Corvallis did that, he's tried. He can't do this every year. We're in a very good spot because of the work that has been done over the past few years to grab that inventory, to grab that resource use, so it's at least doable to recapitulate that into a greenhouse gas inventory.
And Sean, correct me if I'm wrong, with fleet and fuel being one of our highest areas for emissions, having the capability to have this robust data information system will allow us to be more data-informed and more nimble with decision-making for budget decisions as well as just for policy decisions as well, correct?
Absolutely. Michael's on this, he was great enough to provide some information yesterday and today specifically on that. So here's a perfect example. That uptick that you see here is predominantly from the purchase of a few vehicles, and then also those vehicles are using gas. Unfortunately, we honestly don't know exactly what that number is. And looking at just the pure math, it looks like we brought up 37 cars. If you're just looking at the data, but Keith says that that is not actually happened. But here comes that discrepancy between what our data shows and what is really happening. Once we start getting into this new database, once our databases, our existences become more mature, exactly, we can dive in, okay, we brought in seven more cars of this type, it's on fuel. What would happen? We get to the calculator if we bought electric vehicles. Okay, how would that? We are pretty much at the mercy of, once we get the data and how we translate it into an inventory, put a cost-benefit analysis, and move forward with the decision-making.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions?
Commissioner Ojero had another question.
Please.
My other question is that in terms of natural areas and parks and the fairgrounds, the cost, difficulty of bringing them into this analysis is primarily in that very labor-intensive process of going backwards in utility bills and entering in all of the energy units and water units purchased to create the same sort of database that we have for other facilities that Tally now manages more simply? Is that the case?
That's exactly the case. And it really does, I just really quickly, Commissioner, in speaking with Lori Stahlha from Natural Areas and Parks, they have tried to start this, and we have some data back from 2016. But again, it's going to have to be on all five, all the way back to 2010 from fairgrounds and from natural areas and parks.
Okay. So that's the kind of thing that could be done on a special project basis when someone was underutilized, perhaps, but not from work in full swing, just not capacity?
That, exactly. Very similar, when we get to the carbon capture, we brought in Haley Graves. For someone who, as you said, underutilized, that is a potential.
Is natural areas and parks now including that data as they move forward in their utility bill?
What I have right now, in talking to Lori, was electricity usage. We need to go back with the water and all those other ones.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Others?
I think that looks.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, Sean, this is Lilia. I think that looks all right. Commissioners, due to Sean sharing his screen and presenting, he can't have his go-to interface up in front of him, so that's why I'm moderating the questions for him. Sorry, I should have clarified that prior to the question and answer portion, but yes. Go ahead, Sean. I think we're good to move.
No, no, thank, I forgot to say that at the beginning. Thank you very much, yeah. If there's no other questions, then we'll proceed, so we have enough time for everything. The next course we want to get into is renewable, Commissioners are getting to your net question, we will, of course, label appropriately, but also, this is pretty exciting. Last year, we did a big purchase, if you will, was to purchase renewable energy from Pacific Powers Blue Sky program. We are now a champion. To dive into the weeds just a little bit, when we say we purchased 10% of renewables, it's not like we just take our electricity to bill 10%, move on. What we do is we buy these blocks or renewable energy certificates, RECs, that approximate about 10%. So we buy 162 blocks. That, that's number one. Number two is, we purchased them starting July 1st in alignment with our budget. It didn't start kicking in until August, so we really only have five months, August through December. In those five months, 7,600 of our kilowatt-hours came from Blue Sky, which was a result of removing 22.5 tons. That is. In those five months, 7,600 of our kilowatt hours came from Blue Sky, which was a result of removing 22 and a half tons. That is, we're going to have a specific slide on that, that that's why we can have the net and reduce that from the 608. If we do that all year, talking to Blue Sky, that would go out to 57 hun, 57 metric tons, which would be considerable. So that's, if we're hopeful that as we move into the next year, that that's at least. What we just learned last week is that Pacific Power doubled their block, so instead of the same price, instead of 100 kilowatt hours, we get 200 kilowatt hours. Just doubling that means that next, uh, next year, we're hopeful that we would take up 115 tons. So this is, this is not small, this is big, we're going to get into some of the additions later on, but this is some, because of your commitment, because of the purchasing of this, um, we're starting to see the benefits. That is the purchasing. Moving on to our generating our own, uh, this is the solar panels at the New Health Building that was renovated last year. So what, on, on the roof are solar panels, uh, the question that we had was, it was installed in September, unfortunately, talking to with, uh, Dave Hurl in Public Works, that was not brought on until, uh, was not linked up until December. And that's why these two images on the right, this is, it's a really slick website, we can look at it every month, uh, I downloaded this, uh, screen capture on last Thursday, which was the end of April. And so you can see, that's why in 2019, we only reduced it by .003 metric tons, because it was almost nothing. But so far, between June and April, we've already reduced our, or offset our emissions by 11.7 metric tons, which is this. So unfortunately, we don't have any projections on what a full year would be, because they've never been there before, but this is yet another source where we can start producing our, uh, emission.
Sean, Commissioner Ojero has a question.
Thank you.
Uh, just a, um, it's a silly question in some ways, but why did we decide on a calendar year for this, um, trend tracking instead of a fiscal year? Um, is it?
No, it's an excellent, um, honestly, it was a decision that we made four years ago, uh, just to do it annually. Um, I know that the city, that Corvallis does a fiscal year, it's something we could change over, it was just a practice. These are some of the questions, I don't want to go too far down this rabbit hole, but, um, we are now getting a little bit more sophisticated than we have in previous years, and this is a question that we want, uh, that Michael and I and our program want to really dive into of how are we tracking this? You bring up a great question. We have been using the EPA's, uh, spreadsheet, uh, inventory tool, calculating on annual versus fiscal year. This might be time to really dive into, uh, do we want to considerably recalibrate our, our database? But you bring a good question, it was just, we started annually and that's how it's been, um, that's the best I got.
Okay, I just think that as our data get better, we want to do any kind of correlative analyses with budget and budget planning, that it might be useful to have it on the same time cycle?
I, I agree with that, um, I think it's us sitting down and looking at the pros and cons, uh, and moving and moving forward, but I, I completely agree with that. Other questions?
I think we're ready to move forward.
Okay, um, so now that we're starting to look at this, I'm trying to pull together the previous slide. So our actual emissions from electricity was 608 tons. Take away the Blue Sky purchasing and the nominal, uh, savings from the health facilities, we get to 586 net tons. You've heard me say in the past that we needed to be doing two things, one, reducing our electricity use, but also filling up what we do have with electricity with renewables. So these are actual numbers, 2017, down here, six, we are decreasing as, as you've seen the graphs, but as we do so, what we, if we're going to achieve that, uh, goal from 2030, we need to start filling these, uh, electricities with renewables, either purchasing or actual installation of. This is the trend we need to go to, because, and this gets back to the request from December 10th, when we start looking at this, 2086 was our net emissions. Our goal predicated on our emissions from 2010 is 985. Even if we go off the grid at 586, you're starting to see that we still need, we're still at 1500, and by the way, that was just dumb luck, it's an even number. When we start looking at that and our goal is 985, we still need to reduce 515 tons more when we start looking at our total emissions. And just doing the math, even if we purchase more renewable to offset our natural gas use, we still need to get 150 off. What I'm trying to say is, and this kind of gets back to your comment, Commissioner Ojero, in the grand scheme of things, yes, we need to reduce our, our greenhouse gas emissions, period. We need to achieve this goal on multitude of levels. What is going to be challenging for us is because we are smaller, every decision we make isn't that much more impactful. And so having, purchasing as much as we can, really, again, uh, what we are talking about specifically looking at the data, all these decisions we make have a greater impact on this because of, in the, the total, it's a little bit smaller, so. Um, this is a heavy lift, we talked about this back in December, and then when the resolution was signed in February, um, this is going to be a tough goal to achieve, so I want to leave that with, with you on that. And, oh, I'm sorry, we can stop for additional questions before we move on to Lilia's section.
Any commissioner, or any questions, Commissioner?
Uh, no, I think we're, I think we're good, Sean.
Okay, then, uh, Lilia, uh, I want to pass it over to you to be talking about our goals.
Absolutely, thank you, Sean. So, um, I just want to remind Commissioners that prior to, uh, the COVID-19 pandemic, um, the Sustainability Program transitioned over to the Board's Office, February 1st. So Sean, myself, and Jen had approximately 30 days to work together in person before we got to test our team's skills with working together over teleworking. So, um, I'm really, really excited and honored to be able to be part of the Sustainability Program team at this point. My very first goal for the, uh, program and the team in February was within the thirty, first 30 days to align the day-to-day work of the Sustainability Program with the Climate Action Plan. So as you are all aware, the Climate Action Plan, um, has been efforts, many efforts have been led by our Resource Efficiency Committee. Uh, and what I was wanting to see was a direct kind of one-to-one correlation between the day-to-day work of the program and the Climate Action Plan. So with, uh, the Climate Action Plan, you're probably familiar with the themes that are listed below, but with the Sustainability Program, uh, that program also has an environmental plan that guides the day-to-day work. And so when I reviewed, uh, this environmental plan, what I saw was that there are direct ties between the energy themes as well as the waste management themes, uh, between the two plans. So, uh, next slide, Sean? Thank you. Uh, so what we did then was to work backwards from the goal of 2030 that we have, um, been given by the Commissioners to reduce, um, to 50% of 2010 levels by 2030. So what we did is we walked back some milestone, um, not only dates, but I guess amounts, and that's what's been redacted on the slides, and, um, those numbers haven't been vetted, that's why I've redacted them, I didn't want to make anyone uncomfortable. Uh, so anyways, we've walked back those dates and those amounts for each biennium as targets for where we really need to be, uh, in the work that the program does per biennium. Next slide. So what you'll see is anything that's been marked in glue are direct strategies, um, or objectives from the Climate Action Plan that are being advanced by the day-to-day work that's being performed in the Sustainability Program. So, um, next slide? Great, so now Jen is going to spend some time talking about really the stories, the successes and highlights, um, behind some of those quantitative numbers that Sean presented. So we, by primarily in this biennium, are focusing on energy and sustainable materials management, but just because we're focusing on those two thematic areas doesn't mean that work isn't happening in the transportation area or the workforce development area. Um, so Jen, you want to take it away?
By percentage, our, what's that? Um, our electricity use is trending downwards this past year from 2018 to 2019, and this is primarily, um, a result of the ongoing efforts from Facilities Manager Paul Walsinger and his team to upgrade our buildings and systems. Looking forward, using Leesilver as the metric for the renovation of 4500 Research Way is going to help us continue this trend even as we take on, um, more square footage. We saw that our energy consumption is down 1.5%, but our emissions from energy is down 5.7%, as Sean highlighted in the earlier slides, um, and this is really this transition to renewables area, and what we're never going to get to zero for our electricity use, the transition through, um, is going to allow us to continue bringing our emissions down. Next year, we're going to be able to see the full impact in solar panels at the Health Services Building and from the purchase of Blue Sky Energy. Um, we also have grant funds for installation of an additional 96.6 kilowatts of power on county buildings, uh, and we've been in communication with Oregon Clean Power Cooperative about options that exist for lease to own or power purchasing agreements for 4500 Research Way. Uh, we, there's been questions that come up of why do we look at lease to own for other buildings, um, and it's for a few reasons. Uh, last year, we received funding from Energy Trust for feasibility reports, which we did last spring for solar feasibility reports on a number of buildings, and those really put us in line for the Blue Sky grant opportunity, which is pretty neat, um, so we went down that road with, um, those projects. Also, the BOC, um, and some of the projects are too small, uh, when we talk to Oregon Clean Power Cooperative, at the Sunset Building, for example, it's not something they would have considered at the time, um, but the project on, um, here at 4500 Research Way really is a size that makes sense, um, for, um, for that resource. The next slide, so next let's look at the area of materials management, which is really a more holistic way to look at, um, waste. 90% of emissions from materials happen upstream, so reducing the amount of waste regenerating through smart purchasing and streamlined processes will continue to be a key focus of our program and the Resource Efficiency Committee. Um, past year, REC spearheaded an initiative to reduce paper use in printing and copying across the county, and we should be seeing the results of those efforts later this year when we compare our tracking from last year. Now, we have a searchable inventory of what's available on our surplus and reuse center, and it's on the B for staff to look at. Um, Avery and Sunset were pilots for a new waste, for new waste collection processes. That's how the potential to reduce our use of plastic trash bags by 94%, so that's an annual reduction of potentially 30,000 trash bags in those two locations alone. Um, and REC just this month is beginning work on developing a purchasing guideline to the county that will help us make decisions about what to buy by considering a product's impact throughout its life cycle. Um, in the area of waste diversion for the waste we are generating, we want to make sure that we're landfilling less and we're using recycling and composting more. We've now got composting programs at four of our facilities plus the Emergency Operations Center. We have been finding outlets for harder to recycle items like plastic film, and we are facilitating relationships that allow us to reuse products like we have a shredded paper, uh, all the shredded paper goes to, um, a local farm for molding, shredded paper from Avery and Sunset. Um, this year, Fairgrounds joined, uh, the BOC and Avery in having a bottles-up account, which really incentivizes, um, collection of recyclables, and we're continuing to update and educate our workforce on best practices in waste management. Next slide, please. So finally, we saw emissions from the transportation area increase, but we do have a number of successes that should help us in the future. Um, in Leesilver here, Keith has implemented a preventative maintenance program to ensure the vehicles we have on the road are operating at their peak efficiency, and an equipment replacement program to ensure that old and inefficient vehicles are cycled out of Lees. Um, and in the alternative transport, transit area, which is really another way of talking about reducing our single occupancy vehicle trips, um, go-to meeting, which is really now the mainstay of our work, was launched countywide last September, and so Health Department has really been using this tool, um, regularly, but IP, REC, and Sustainability Program work together to roll out this tool to other departments just in time for this need we have now. Um, also, uh, we put in the installation of a compactor at the Fairgrounds on our list of climate action successes. And so while this is not measured as part of the county's mission goal, the compactor is going to result in fewer public service truck miles being driven, as waste from the Fairgrounds will go from pickup 52 times a year to about 5 times a year. That's my part.
Thank you, Jen. Commissioners, any questions for Jen?
Uh, I, I've got one, uh, it, it was, uh, great having you in the Board's Office for, uh, a short period of time, uh, wondering, uh, if we are getting suggestions from, from staff on, uh, helping, helping with our goals, so that it, it's seen as everybody's job to reduce emissions rather than, oh, uh, you folks telling us what to do.
Um, I think that the Resource Efficiency Committee is really a, um, is a place for that, it's a, the staff that sit on that committee are really conduits for their department, so they are both taking information from, to the, to their departments, and they're bringing, um, questions and information from their departments to the committee, so that's really the, the place, the easiest place for that to happen.
Okay, great.
All right, thank you, Jen, back to you, Sean.
Thank you, Lilia, thank you, Jen. Okay, we're going to end with a, a couple of projects that we did over the past, excuse me, over the past year. The first is, uh, we, we discussed this again in December, uh, about estimating our carbon capture or carbon sequestration from county-owned lands. So we brought in an intern, Haley Graves, uh, she worked for us in the winter quarter, uh, in alignment with OSU. And I want to kind of go through, because this is very important, uh, to go through the disclaimers and assumptions. First and foremost, uh, we can't use any of the carbon capture's actual carbon sequestration as in, we can use it against our net zero goal. Uh, those lands are not certified, uh, I just want to be crystal clear on that aspect accordingly, uh, we can't ensure or certify this. I recommend it to be in the net zero calculation, you'll also see why, because the numbers are pretty big. But the real purpose was, uh, getting back to this constant theme you hear, is giving you Commissioners and policymakers more tools, more, uh, more lenses to look at. When we start managing our lands and natural areas and parks, there's going to be pros and cons for doing that, one of which is, uh, carbon capture from these lands. Uh, so this is why we want to highlight this as a policy and budget-making decision of lands. The process was, uh, myself, Haley, I worked with Adam Sevens in Natural Areas and Parks, and Adam provided us with all the natural areas and parks, you'll see this spreadsheet next, and land cover. We also worked with Doug Sakenger in GIS, uh, to calculate what that cover was. And then what we did was, uh, researched the coefficients of the five land covers, we'll get into, and to be clear, we want to be ultra-conservative in these, so we used the lowest coefficient we could find. That said, um, I'm not sure if everyone can see this, but the real, I walked through the big issues. Uh, one is these are the listings of the each and all the natural areas that the county owns and the parks. Again, Adam provided what the total acreage was, which is why you see these five, and then identified these five land use covers, forests, wetland, grassland, impervious services like boat ramps and parking lots, and then a grass mowed area. So we walked through all these five, I want to be crystal clear on this, we did not, this was over 10 weeks, we did not go out there with a tape measure and diameter and identify each species and way too much for this exercise. But what we did was find coefficients for a typical acre of forest, typical acre of wetland, and that's what these, that you see is carbon coefficient. So for 32 tons of carbon is being captured per acre, wetland, grassland is two, impervious is zero, which is concrete, and grass mow, uh, there's some studies to capture from grass versus the emissions from landscaping like mowers and weed whackers and those kinds of things, and that is where these coefficients. Bottom line is, conservative estimate is capturing about 34,000 tons each year. I, again, I hesitate to say, oh, that's what, 16 times more than we're admitting, uh, that's not the case of this. Uh, there was an exercise in looking at what our, our lands do, and as far as next steps... And as far as next steps, we would like to continue fine-tuning this. Just getting this spreadsheet, acres, coverage, was a really great tool, and was great to be working with Adam, as well as our program has climate action demonstration funding. And so, when Adam goes out and does additional consulting work, we have talked about collaborating on those to continue to fine-tune this, again, as a decision-making process. So I wanted, there's a lot right there, but I wanted to hesitate for, are there any questions on this?
Commissioner Oshiro has a question.
Thank you.
Sean, I have not run the numbers myself. I'm assuming that it's either wetland or forest that is the best at capturing carbon? And I was just wondering which is most effective? Because then we have to move forest land, and I'm not sure.
The coefficient that we used, Commissioner, was 32 tons for forest, 15 for...
Oh, right there, okay.
No, I mean, like, there's a lot, I think, an whole hour for this alone. But yeah, these are the coefficients we used. We researched a minimum of five coefficients, research-wise, and again, we went with the lowest. I can tell you, again, not to go too far down the rabbit hole, on the East Coast, these wetlands were actually higher up there than the forests. But again, these are averages. And I want to be crystal clear, they're very general averages of a typical western forest. And hopefully, as this matures, we can fine-tune these numbers into a little bit more of what's going on in that count.
Okay. That makes sense, and I'm sure that there are lots of OSU that are doing related research and would be able to fine-tune a bit.
Absolutely.
But a great start, thank you.
Well, thank you. Lilia, other questions?
Nope. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Malone?
Well, Sean, I really appreciate, I think you said you were tasked with this question last December and coming up with a pretty good chart without spending weeks doing three measurements and just kind of get a ballpark idea of what's going on out there, and really appreciate your taking our questions seriously and coming up with something useful that we can work with going forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Hopefully, we all take questions to Commissioner's ears. I do want to just do a completely shameless plug. None of this would happen because, without the commitment of the commissioners and the budgets for our internship program. When we get to the next slide, and you're going to see Michael, and Haley, and Colleen, and Maura, and James, and the countless interns, there's no way we can do this. Commissioner Oshiro, you commented how we're going to get the data from other sources, these projects. They are absolutely invaluable. And so, I thank you for your commitment to giving us the resources to conduct these kinds of projects. So, thank you for that. With time coming short, if you don't mind, Lilia, I'll go to the next project.
Yes, please.
Cool. So the last one we're going to get to, and I'll also discuss back in December, is to really start fine-tuning a calculator, that is, to say like a cost-benefit analysis. If we do X, then we're going to reduce carbon by this much or cost this much, to really start giving us a policy analysis tool, a budget analysis tool. And so, what we did here, and by way, I mean Michael, our intern, as to much of the state of it, created this, a really good start of a carbon calculator. So I'm going to attempt to do this and pop out of our presentation. Can you see all this, Lilia?
You can, yep. I've got columns A through I.
I'm sorry?
I can see columns A through I.
Perfect, thank you. So, we, Michael, we did in three categories, the actual calculator, where the coefficients, what we mean by coefficients is if we do X, we know this much carbon would be reduced, and then the cost. You will also see we align this with Climate Action Plan, Transportation, Energy. These are best management practices, BNP's, or activities we can take. And you can go across, and here's our goal, 5 percent by 2030, which is 985, if you remember from the first slide. And we just kind of walk through these things. Here's the coefficient of going all electric. We can, I don't want to go each and every one, but here's electricity, and there's coefficients. And we can, if we go there, we can start seeing, if we reduce X by 50 percent, if we reduce this by 25 percent, we can anticipate this much emissions being reduced. We also included resources of where those coefficients and activities came from, so that we can get it fine-tuned as, as Commissioner Oshiro said, as more studies come out, we can improve upon what we already have. And then, we're also creating this and started, what would be the increased cost? So moving from R50 to R99, which is renewable diesel, it is going to be an increase in price, but how does that compare with achieving our goal or comparing with purchasing renewable energy? This really starts to give us a robust tool to start identifying what is the biggest bang for the buck. It's a great start, and I appreciate Michael diving into this and to share this with you all as we move forward and become more mature, especially as we move into the budget process this summer, this might be helpful as we start making decisions. So again, this is another thing, we could take an entire hour on, but I wanted to let you know that we completed this task.
Commissioner Oshiro?
Questions on that?
Yes, I was just wondering if I could, if you could share this with us, so we can take a look at it in greater detail. And I have one quick question about, when we talk about biodiesel, biodiesel, is that actually reused or oil, or is it crops grown to make biodiesel, which I'm not particularly wild about, even if that's a lower greenhouse gas emission content because of the whole life cycle issue?
Commissioner, we might have to schedule a few more hours on this. You get into the real crux of this. The problem with sustainability is it's a matter of options, and where do you lie on this? Biodiesel using plant materials, there's pros and cons. Early on, with renewable, R50, R99, we had palm oil, which is not great for ecosystems from where it emanates from. You bring up a great point. If you're looking at this through a pure lens of greenhouse gases, okay, then that's our decisions. If we bring in other impacts, life cycle costs, ecological impacts, absolutely. These are some of the things we just need to walk through, make some decisions on guiding principles, what matters, and make decisions moving forward. Excellent point. But yeah, I will share this with you, yes. Other questions?
I think we're good to switch back to the last slides.
Okay. So we wanted to complete the presentation with looking forward to 2020. So, the real elephant in the room moving next year is going to be the new facility at 4500 Research. When talking, preparing for this presentation last week, and talking to Pacific Power, they brought to our attention that over the last 12 months, the 4500 Research used one and a half million kilowatts. Last year, all of it in county used 2 million kilowatts. Again, coming, about three-quarters of our total use is going to be increased next year. And that, and we're not even in there yet. I know the EOC is, but that's pretty small in comparison to moving the entire department in. I do not want to turn this into a doom and gloom. I do want to bring it to your attention, because very similar, if you remember from those curves, when we brought Sunset in, we saw that peak. This is going to be same thing. We were talking about reducing our greenhouse gas, even if we go off the grid, it's additional 510, 15 tons. The estimate of next year would be about 450 tons, again, before we move in. I want to come back to, Commissioner Oshiro, you kind of commented on that and water. It is not my intent to come in and say, oh, we're 2,000, that doesn't matter. To the contrary, what it means is each decision we make has a real impactful consequence of our greenhouse gas goal. And this is one of them. I'm not saying it was a good or bad decision, that's not what I'm saying. It's just that these are the things we need to deal with. So as Jen was talking about, when we look at going into the new building, it's tremendous for us to hear Joe and the commissioner saying we want this to be a showcase facility, whether that's having solar kind of on the facility itself, purchasing renewables, lead, greenhouse gas, yes, indoor air quality, really making all of these decisions are very impactful for us to achieve our goal. So, yes, we're going to, we need to be addressing the increased electricity and greenhouse gas. We have tremendous opportunity with this new building, not only for the building itself, but to train our own staff and facilities to become more acute in how to do facilities in the future. Second, candidly, I'll be curious to see how this COVID affects our greenhouse gas next year. We have, obviously, we're not driving as much, we're not into facilities that much. However, lights are still on, it really is a lot of plug load. Of note, everyone on this call who's not in the facility is still on their computers, so we're still emitting greenhouse gas, even though you may not be at the BOC or Avery or Sunset, that's still happening. So we will, I'll be very curious to see how this has impact on purely greenhouse gas emissions next year. The next two are renewable purchasing and solar panel installation opportunities. Jen did a great job of identifying what's possible, existing buildings, 4500, et cetera, but this is something we need to aggressively pursue. And lastly, just looking at our budget, obviously, COVID is going to have a pretty big impact on our budget, we're already seeing that. How big, I think it's not quite finalized, but regardless, if 2123, that's what 2123 is, now it has a crystal ball, if we're going to really achieve that 50 percent by 2030, that really puts it into the lap of 23, 25, 25, 27, 27, 29, to aggressively achieve our, to move, implement activities to achieve our greenhouse gas production goal. So, that is the end of our presentation, and I'll leave it up to questions, and it goes to you, Lilia.
Absolutely. Thank you, Sean. So I just want to provide Michael an opportunity, if you want to provide any feedback or addition. I know that a lot of your work has gone into this PowerPoint, and Sean did a great job summarizing it, but you have patiently sat through it, so I just wanted to give you an opportunity to chime in on some of the data that you worked on.
Yeah, and I mean, Sean really nailed it. I mean, a lot of that too, that I've been doing now, has really been focusing on the calculator, trying to figure out ways to move forward. And I think that is going to be really exciting, looking at kind of cost versus make a sense CO2 equivalent that we can reduce. And in that, there's going to be a lot of market research and really a lot of ways that we can maybe offset future costs, like switching R50 to R99. There's a lot of things we can do just in terms of reduction that are going to reduce our overall cost in terms of kilowatt-hours that might kind of call it a wash, so it's not going to really cost us any extra money to be able to meet that goal. So, yeah, I think Sean nailed it. Yeah, happy to have been able to work on this project.
Great. Thank you, Michael. And Commissioners, I just want to highlight that last tool that Sean previewed with regard to informing budget decisions and policy decisions. If there are other tools, or like you mentioned, the question about the carbon sequestration from natural areas and parks, if there's questions or tools that the Sustainability Program can be looking at developing to help with budgetary decisions as we move into the next fiscal year, we'd be happy to do that. Any other questions from Commissioners, or anyone else on the go-to-meeting line?
I have a comment. I really appreciate the 10 years of data that you've dug out that's really helpful in showing the trends versus a short-term snapshot of we used so much this year and maybe being able to compare it to the last year or two. And that really ties right into thoughts about the budget, how we spend our resources and making sure that decisions we make tie in with our goals. And so, we've got a real challenge here with the new building, and I think it's critical that building's going to last us a long time, maybe even somebody else. And we have the opportunity with remodel to do things right and get a good start on making sure that the building is appropriate for decades to come, so.
Commissioner Malone, I would like to recognize Greg Verrett. Greg is out there in our go-to meeting, and Greg helped give birth to this Sustainability Program a number of years ago. So Greg, anything that you would like to add?
Thanks, Joe. Great work you guys. I had to, sorry, I had to step off to consult with County Council about the upcoming hearing at 11:00, so I missed some parts of the presentation. But really exciting to see, I think the analysis tool, Michael, that you just presented is fantastic. I think the work on carbon sequestration from our natural areas really shows, it gives us another way to value those lands and to consider them in a quantitative as well as qualitative contribution to our county, to our greater community. So, yeah, really great work, everybody, and Sean, Michael, Haley, and Lilia, well done.
Pat, this is Annabelle, can you hear me?
Yes.
You know, what you've recorded out today and all the work that's been going on, it's really, really delightful to me. We started down this journey a little sort of 10 years ago, and it's amazing how far we've gone on it. And it's really to the dedication of all of you that took an interest in moving this forward. Sometimes, you know, the leadership can say you're going to do something, but it doesn't always happen that way. So it really took the commitment of all of you, David, and thank you. The least I can say, thank you for everything you've done.
Zan?
If I may just, if I may just, one, one...
Yes.
I want to comment on that. I've had sustainability on my business card for quite some time now. This is not normal. Not every government, not every community has this commitment. And I really want to highlight that, the fact that myself and my equivalents, Scott Dibbette and Corvallis, and Brandon at OSU, and Billy at school, we meet all the time because we're both having a leadership that's committed to these principles. So I want to thank you all, again, I keep saying funding in, funding this program. Not everyone has that, so I thank you for that, I really appreciate that.
I just wanted to thank you all for the fact that you now have much enriched and integrated program, and I think that the team that you all are building, and I would include Daniel with Solid Waste now, is making a big difference. It shows that you have more hands, and we will do what we can to keep the interns going. I know that's going to be a tough budget year moving forward, and we're going to have tough decisions to make when we start the next biennium. So, thank you. And one question in all of that, that is, this PowerPoint will be on our website, and are we intending that this is going to be the regular presentation, or are we eventually going to have some sort of a more automated function on the website?
That is the intent. We're experiencing with all this stuff behind the scenes, a database is there. I think right now, we want to use the summer to fine-tune how we present that. Again, we could do individual dashboards and stuff with PowerPoints like this, and maybe parse it out for topic, but we still need to fine-tune the automated part of that. And yeah, that's just something that I think we're going to be focusing over the summer leading into the fall, because whoever the next climate action intern is, Michael wants to stay, I'm telling you, that is the toughest part, to get the database from the beginning and redoing it over and over again. But yes, that's our intent, is to make this much more easy dashboard, whatever you want to call it, that is going to be a fine chance, Commissioner.
Okay, yeah, I think... Okay, yeah, I think we need to have an intern that is IT and database savvy, it sounds like, for the next focus, yeah. Thanks.
Thank you.
Well, Sean, I've been walking by your empty office next to mine and wondering, what's Sean up to anyway? And so, this is a great presentation, and I think it shows, we had, for the last approximately six weeks, we've had a focus on the virus and responding to that, but it's nice to know that some of our other really important projects are moving forward and that Benton County can walk and chew gum at the same time. Thank you for your efforts, and that plant you left in your office is still alive, just barely. I don't think it's in quite as good a shape as when you left, but it is alive, so.
Okay, I'll swing by. I hear that my office is getting pilfered by people. I lose monitors, I'm doing all kinds of things. I need some tie-dye shirts, anyway. Thanks for giving an eye on the plant, sir.
My pleasure. Are there any other questions or comments for the Sustainability, our wonderful Sustainability Well, hearing none, like others have said, thank you very much, and keep up the great work.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Next up here, 5.2, discussion and initiating a transfer of jurisdiction, South 15th Street to the city of Philomena. So, we have Laurel Byer, Gordon Kurtz from Public Works. Laurel's out there as well.
Laurel is out there as well.
Okay.
Laurel is having a few audio issues, so hopefully she'll be able to tap in here in just a minute.
Thanks for the update, Teresa. Much appreciated.
Thank you. In the meantime, you guys can't hear me, right?
Yes.
We sure can, Gordon.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And if Gordon wants to get started, he can. Gordon, do you want to start off, and then Laurel can join us when she's available?
Well, I can kind of give you a brief on what we've done here, is that Mill Pond Crossing is a subdivision on Old Mills site, north of Chapel Drive, east of 15th Street. And when the first phase of this subdivision was proposed, we recognized that we have that tail end of 15th Street is still in county jurisdiction, and the city of Philomena was only going to require that they build a three-quarter street improvement, which would leave the westerly side of 15th Street undeveloped to urban standards. And we have to develop the west side of 15th in order to transfer jurisdiction to the city of Philomena. So, the county worked out with the developer and the contractor that we could then kick in some money, they could finish the curb and gutter on the west side of the road as they were building the appurtenances for the subdivision and the utilities. And then, once that was completed, we could turn over that stub of 15th. There you are. We turn over that stub of 15th to the city of Philomena, and that is the action we're proposing right now. And those improvements have been completed and accepted by the county.
Laurel, do you have anything to add?
She may not be set yet. I think that's the general synopsis, however. There were some storm drain issues as we came through the whole process, and there's a dual storm drain system in 15th Street right now. One on, there's a pipe on the west side and a pipe on the east side both. And there's a new storm system proposed as part of Phase Two, and that is, those three pipes are basically carrying a majority of the drainage that's coming out of the Philomena urban area. And as soon as the second phase is completed, which should be toward the end of the summer, all of the storm drain issues that we were addressing previously will probably be resolved. There is still floodplain issues in that area of the world that need to be addressed by the city, but that is outside of our jurisdiction.
Are there any questions for Gordon?
I don't think I have any specific questions, but I just wanted to make sure I understood where we are. It sounds like we've been working with an outside contractor, and they're the ones that are doing the work, and the work is basically being done to the satisfaction of the city, and it's just our turn now, Board of Commissioners, to approve the order to proceed to transfer jurisdiction.
Exactly. Initially, I thought that the City Council, that the Philomena City Council had to ask that the jurisdiction be changed, but Laurel informed me that I had it backwards. And so, you guys, the process starts with you all, and then is handed over to the Philomena City Council for approval and acceptance. And Laurel, I'll refer to you now.
I was going to say, sorry, everybody. I was having technical difficulties. All I had is go-to meeting stuff figured out, but no, no, they're not.
Were you able to hear the discussion we've had so far, Laurel?
I just heard Gordon answering that last question about the contractor, but otherwise, no, I didn't hear. I'm sure you did a great job.
I think we have a pretty good idea. Do you have a short synopsis of the project?
So, yeah, I can go ahead and give you a little bit more information, or probably repeat what Gordon said, just that the Mill Pond Crossing is a subdivision in Philomena and had frontage on 15th and Chapel, and they already did improvement to 15th. And at the time, the developer was only required to do a three-quarter street, which didn't really make sense to the city or to the county. Why not do a full street improvement, and then the city will take over jurisdiction? And that's, you know, a win-win for us, as far as that goes, so that way we can get a little piece of street off of our maintenance requirements, and then the people that live along there have an urban improvement. So, this project would just, it's still a, establish the public hearing on June 2nd, and so we would go through notification, and our county surveyor will post, and then it would just go through the regular transition process.
And this?
Are we ready for?
Just a second. This project is fully within the city of Philomena's boundaries?
Yes, it is.
And so, it's cleaning up some of the anomalies we have around the county, where we have a county road within another jurisdiction?
Yes.
Okay.
And it really, previously, it may have functioned as more of a county kind of collector road, but now it's developing out so much that it really has more of a residential urban feel. So, it makes sense for it to be a city street now.
Great. Yeah, Zan, I think we're ready.
Okay. I would move to approve the order to initiate the proceedings to transfer jurisdiction of South 15th Street, County Road Number 26461. The city of Philomena has set the substance of public hearing for June 2nd, 2020.
I will second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the transfer. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Well, thank you, Gordon and Laurel.
Thank you for your patience.
Next up is item number six, the Consent Calendar.
I'll move the Consent Calendar.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. So, now we are on to item number seven, Proclamations. 7.1 proclaiming May 3rd to 9th, 2020, as Public Service Recognition Week in Benton County. You need to turn your mic on, Zan.
Thank you.
Okay.
I will, sorry, technical difficulty here. In the matter of proclaiming May 3rd to 9th, 2020, as Public Service Recognition Week, proclamation P. 2020-007. During Public Service Recognition Week, we express our gratitude to our county employees for their dedication to mission, service, and stewardship. These individuals deliver results for those who live, work, play, and worship in Benton County, often without a plane. Government is the way we come together to provide the services and amenities that promote the well-being of our communities. This role is under support in the preamble of the Oregon Constitution, which declares that states purposes that justice be established, order maintained, and liberty perpetuated. In Benton County, we practice our motto, "At your service every day," while keeping in mind that our core values of equity and health inform all of our actions. Each of Benton County's 610 employees, whether they work a part or full-time schedule from an office, their home, or in the field, provides valuable service to the community. County employees play so many roles. They keep the water running in our service districts, provide for orderly community development, keep our roads and bridges safe, provide parks and natural areas for recreation, prosecute suspected lawbreakers, provide for public safety, ensure fair elections, and provide physical and behavioral health care. Serving during the COVID-19 pandemic has spotlighted our emergency planners and public health practitioners who can contain disease transmission, support community health, and provide high-quality, science-based public information. None of this public service would be possible without the support of specialists in information technology, human resources assessment, and finance. Now, therefore, in light of the extraordinary effort all staff put forth every day, and particularly in light of the COVID-19 pandemic, the Benton County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims May 3rd to 9th, Public Service Recognition Week. And a big thank you to all employees.
I think we need a motion to finish this.
I would move that we approve the proclamation.
Of?
Second.
And that's May 3rd through 9th, 2020. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye. Aye.
So, next up is proclaiming May 17th through the 23rd, 2020, as National Public Work Week in Benton County. I've got Gary Stockoff listed, but I don't see Gary. Do we?
I'm on the phone, Commissioner.
Oh, excellent. Well, you're up, Gary.
All right. Well, good morning, everybody. In the matter of proclaiming May 17th to 23rd, 2020, as National Public Work Week in Benton County, Public Works Infrastructure Facilities and Services are vital and force to sustainable communities and to the health, safety, and well-being of the people of the county, and such facilities and services cannot be provided without dedicated efforts of Public Works professionals who plan, build, operate, and maintain the transportation system, land records, water supply, food systems, motor pool, and public buildings and structures countywide. These professionals represent our local unit of government, and it is in the public interest for citizens and civic leaders of this county to gain knowledge of and maintain a progressive interest in and understanding of public works and public works programs in the community. And 2020 marks the 60th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now, therefore, the Board of Commissioners proclaims May 17th to 23rd, 2020, as Public Works Week in Benton County, and invites everyone to join us with the American Public Works Association to learn more about the vital importance of public works, the dedication of public works employees, and to celebrate their efforts.
Well, thank you, Gary. Can I have a motion?
I move to proclaim May 17th to 23rd, National Public Work Week. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you, Gary. And your team.
Thank you.
And next up, 7.3, proclaiming May 2020 as Military Appreciation Month. Jennifer Moore, welcome.
Good morning, everyone. In the matter of proclaiming May 2020, Military Appreciation Month in Benton County, proclamation P. 2020-009. The United States Congress in 2004 passed a resolution proclaiming May as National Military Appreciation Month, calling all Americans to remember those who gave their lives in defense of freedom, and to honor the men and women of all our armed services who have served and are now serving our nation. And the Commissioners and residents of Benton County have the deepest gratitude toward all veterans and service members and their families, and honor the commitment and courage of the many people of Benton County who are serving and have served our nation. And the Benton County Board of Commissioners extends its heartfelt gratitude and goodwill to service members of Benton County U.S. Army National Guard, and all the personnel of armed services who have earned the respect and admiration of a grateful nation. Now, therefore, the Benton County Commissioners proclaim May 2020 as the month set aside in Benton County for honoring our veterans, service members, and their families, and observance of their contribution to our community, our state, and our nation.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
I move approval of proclamation P. 2020-009, since our May 2020 Military Appreciation Month in Benton County. Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Thanks, Jen. And next up, 7.4, proclaiming May 2020 as Older Americans Month. Are you going to take that one, Jen?
Yes. Randy sent a regret, but did have to jump off the call.
Okay.
In the matter of proclaiming May 2020 of Older Americans Month in Benton County, proclamation 2020-010, Benton County is committed to engaging and supporting older adults, their families, and caregivers. 20% of Benton County's residents are 60 years of age or older. These residents enrich and strengthen our communities in countless ways. We acknowledge the importance of taking part in activities that promote physical, mental, and emotional well-being, no matter your age. Our community can enrich the lives of individuals of every age by promoting home and community-based services that support independent living, involving older adults in community planning, events, and other activities, and providing opportunities for older adults to work, volunteer, learn, read, and mentor. Therefore, we hereby proclaim that May 2020 is Older Americans Month in Benton County. We urge every
We urge every resident to take time this month to recognize older adults and the people to serve and support them on the vital cards of our community.
Thank you. All right. A motion, please.
I would like the privilege of being doing the motion since I'm the oldest member on this board to proclaim May 2020 as Older Americans Month in Benton County. I'll second that. That's the youngest member of the board and almost falling into that 20% demographic.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Well, good job.
Yeah, I'm at a party. This is all over.
We're getting there, Annabelle. Okay. 7.5 proclaiming May 2020 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in Benton County. From the arrival of the first Asian American and Pacific Islander immigrants to those who arrived today, as well as those native to the Hawaiian Islands and to our Pacific Island Territories, the vast diversity of languages, religions, and cultural traditions of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders continue to enrich our nation and county. Asian American and Pacific Islander immigrants have contributed greatly to our society. They have distinguished themselves in literature and the arts, led many businesses to the pinnacle of their respective industries, and played a vital role in science, medicine, and technology. And Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders will continue to be an important part of Benton County's diverse tapestry of cultures and ideas. They have a proud legacy of service and dedication to our community, our city, our state, and our county. And May has become a symbolic month in which we honor Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander heritage, and take part in appropriate celebrations of culture, traditions, and history. Therefore, be it proclaimed that May is Asian and Pacific American Heritage Month in Benton County, and all residents are encouraged to join in this observance. A motion, please.
I would move approval of the proclamation P. 2020-011, in the matter of proclaiming May as Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders Heritage Month in Benton County. Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Commissioner Millet, I might add, today is May 5th, and it is the celebration of the Battle of Cuebla in Mexico, and very highly recognized in the Latino community. So happy May 5th. Happy Cinco de Mayo.
Thank you. Aye.
Happy Cinco de Mayo.
I had thought of that.
And May is a month of celebration. I wanted to point out, in making this particular proclamation, the fact that during the COVID-19 pandemic, this particular community of people has been harassed and subjected to some pretty horrible treatment across the country because of, some people believe that this virus that we're suffering is a, you know, a Chinese virus or Asian virus, and as if the virus has a nationality. And I just want to bring that up. I think that we need to be very careful and point out how regularly the fact that illness does not discriminate, and no one is to blame. And tolerance, we should have no tolerance for that kind of behavior at any time.
Thank you, Zan. And I'd like to point out, my friend Lloyd Henyon has been working on behalf of Pacific Islanders to make sure they're included in our healthcare system, and has worked tirelessly for a better part of a decade to advance legislation, both at the state level and on the national level, and has quite a bit to show for his efforts. So I salute Lloyd Henyon's as an example of putting values into practice. So we are slightly ahead of schedule, so we will, and the public hearing cannot start before 11:00, so.
Commissioner Millet and I can take it from here.
Okay. Take it away, Joe.
Commissioners, I did step out and try and realign our agenda for this morning, seeing that we were going to have probably 25 minutes before we can start the public hearing. As a result, I'd like to jump to our emergency response policy, team, and EOC updates. That is item number, is that eight on the agenda? So I'd like to skip there. I've got Danielle Brown and Charlie Fountain on the line, as well as Brian Lee, to provide their updates. There is no policy discussion scheduled for today in terms of staff needing direction, but we do have updates for you, and I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to Danielle and Charlie.
Sure. I couldn't find my mute button. It was hiding. Yeah, this morning was a significant thing. We have started working on reopening plan and forming a division at the EOC to compile the documentation and identify the steps necessary in the state guidance and the prerequisites to submit a reopening plan. Of course, the timing of this will depend on the Commissioners and input from electeds, but we want to get started immediately on making sure that the pieces are in place behind that. I think all of you have probably seen the outline of this. There is the state that's organized reopening according to public health preparedness regions. And so our region is Yankel, Oak, Marion, Lynn, Benton, and Lincoln. Six counties, so the health administrators from those six counties, we've been meeting and discussing this. There are a variety of, some are county-specific, and some are regional. Most of the regional ones, the state will be compiling documentation of we, or metrics, but we will need to provide narrative to stand behind those in metrics and narrative for each of the counties specific. Our understanding at this point, and it's still somewhat preliminary, we're waiting for a lot more detail from the state, is that reopening applications will be by county, will be accepted by county, but that, or county to apply the regional metrics have to be met by the whole region. And then there's, there's a separate set of prerequisites of the county-specific that each county will have to meet. And so, you know, I think you little appreciate from what I'm saying and from seeing the document, there's still some ambiguity behind this. There are a long list of questions that are, we've submitted through, through the health administrators to OHA. Brian has also submitted a parallel set of questions, again, with some other emergency management specific things, through his channels to OEM, because the language and the word in these is some general. But we are organizing a specific division within the EOC to work on this, and that will be a standing yard group. Your, our aim at this point are the metrics that are tied to Phase 1 of opening, because that is the, that's the goal that is in front of us at whatever time the county feels is And then this will, this group will remain intact, and the, the documentation and assurance group for each subsequent phase, Phase 2 and Phase 3, has more detailed guidance and has, through the epidemiology and the progress of the whole thing, progress through subsequent phases. So we've got a core work group. We have identified initial points that we need. Yeah, so I think that, that is the major development out here right now. There are pieces of this that cross over into other sectors, including the requirements that we have in location. A hotel, motel, or similar accommodation, for people who test positive or are waiting tests or presumptive, positive but cannot, isolate or quarantine within their own homes. And you know that has been an ongoing challenge for us, and it is an ongoing challenge in many, many places across the state. And, you know, state input on that has been, oh, we can help you with that, but there's, we don't know, we don't know what the steps will be beyond that. So that's the sort of questions we're pushing back up. And the, you know, there are metrics around testing capability, hospital capability, PPE capability, contact tracing, staffing and capability. And so we feel we're in a fit position to meet those. Now we have to document this in such a way that we can, when you're ready, we can submit that documentation to the state. And we're going hunting.
Zan, do you have a question or a comment?
I do. I have a couple of questions. One is about the fact that we need to demonstrate some downward trends in our disease prevalence as well, or at least flat. And we were, we were there before the trace study began, but now that we're doing more testing, that picture is changing. So I wanted to know what you can tell us about how those trace study results are coming in, and what you are expecting to see in terms of our positive cases.
No, it's a great question, and Public Health provided feedback up to the state several weeks ago with an advice not to base the criteria on the number of positives or the level of positives with the anticipation that testing would increase, and we would be turning a lot of asymptomatic positives. And so indeed, around that, specifically. Can you still hear me?
Yes. Folks, if you could please put your microphone on mute if you are not speaking.
Teresa, we can hear you.
No, it's Sherry.
Is it Sherry?
It's your Sherry. I will, I will give her a text.
Thank you, Teresa.
Welcome.
Okay. So the first metric around disease levels is the percentage of emergency department visits for COVID-like illness, and those are tied to seasonal averages. So we've already been monitoring that locally. Peter Benworth, there is a statewide system for influenza-like illness that's being adapted for COVID. And so again, they'll look back at a five-year average of what influenza-like illness has been for that week, and then the state actually will track that one. So it's tied up around emergency department visits that meet the criteria. The second one is the 14-day decline in hospital admissions. And so again, you know, we want to be seeing a decline, you know, seriously ill that require hospital visits, and that, that's local, each county will track that with its local hospital, and there are metrics behind that. Around, specifically around testing, the metric is the capability to provide a certain level of testing, so 30 tests per 10,000 people per week. Not that you actually perform that many tests, but you have the capability so you can respond if there are indicators like an increase in emergency room visits, if there's an increase in hospital admissions, that then you can respond, or there's a focal outbreak, like Lynn County just did their, their mass testing, or the folks at the National Frozen Food Plan, have the capability to perform that testing if necessary. So it's not tied up around the absolute number. And so that, you know, we will be numbering number of positives as a proportion of the total tests done, which you feel like is a, is a more accurate metric than the absolute number of positives. Hope that makes sense.
That makes a lot of sense, and I'm grateful that it's taken a more nuanced approach.
I have a question. Did I hear you say that there had to be unanimity among the three counties or regions?
No, it's actually six counties. There doesn't have to be. So we have a still of diversity. And we have Wilton County that has five cases, and Marion County that's 500, and is, is, you know, pacing ahead of any other county in Oregon in terms of outbreak growth. So while there are a set of metrics around the capability to do testing, around a sufficient number of test sites, around the number of emergency room visits, the, the regional supply of PPE, each county though can apply individually once those group metrics. And in talking to my colleagues, we're pretty confident that we do meet the basics as a region, but again, we need to document that. So we don't see any particular roadblocks at this point to companies being able to apply, should they choose to do so, but we need to get the pieces in place for that.
Charlie, is it possible to estimate a timeline when we might be able to apply to the governor for reopening on Phase 1?
So I have not heard, and perhaps you guys have a, a date when these applications will be accepted. I know there are counties that have quote-unquote petitions to the governor for reopening immediately. I don't have a, a date. I'm pretty confident that we'll be able to have a significant amount of this documentation in place by the end of this week.
The only thing I've heard is May 15th bandied around, and I think that the county did petition to reopen already, and regions, the petitions didn't have quite all of the data that is required in this new and clarified framework. But as you know, Charlie, the governor is having regional conversations, region by region, began last week and continuing through this week. And I think that we'll have better information emerging on the other side of those conversations. So sometime early next week, we might have a better sense for what. So sometime early next week, we might have a better sense for what is happening across the state. But yeah, it's a tricky position we're in, and I think that I'm just looking forward to seeing the proposal and the status for Benton County and for the region overall so that we can make the wisest decision possible, knowing that everyone's getting antsy and we need to reopen our businesses.
Yeah, absolutely. And so we are having conversations actively amongst the public health administrators, among the emergency managers, to align those regional pieces, and then each working, referring to one of those data so that we have something that looks fairly consistent from county to county, but available for those county-specific applications.
One of the concerns I have, Charlie, this is Annabelle again, one of the concerns I have is there's so much variability in terms of people's view on this issue, and I'm concerned, you know, I think in Oregon, I think that we've been moving along, you know, fairly consistent with our approach. I'm concerned about the predictions of this is not over, there's going to be another big spike, and how does that affect us if people, counties around us, or even states around us, aren't paying attention to this? I know the Midwest has been, has not been hit as hard as East Coast and West Coast, but it's predicted that that's coming. So there'll be travel over the summer, and I'm just concerned about it.
Yes, Commissioner, you're exactly correct. You know, we had these conversations yesterday, and one that the six of us as health administrators, you know, the coast has not been hit very hard. They are very wary about the outbreak in the fishpacking plant that occurred a couple of days ago in Astoria. They want to keep it that way, you know, and they've taken a pretty hard line in ticketing surfers and banning short-term motel and cottage stays in Lincoln County, I think as a state for real concern. And unfortunately, there will be a considerable time lag before we know what the consequences of the actions in places like Oklahoma and Georgia and Florida are. Remember, it was, it was two weeks, over two weeks, before we started actually being able to identify specific cases that were directly tied to the election, the primary election in Wisconsin. And then, you know, over time, there have been, there have been quite a number of cases that through contact investigation were for demonstration that that sort of gathering was the cause of transmission. So with those Eastern Seaboard, you know, in central states opening up now, it is very likely that the number of Oregon counties will have their petitions in, and the documentation that, and potentially have gotten permission to open, but we even are very clear on the consequences of this test that these other states have taken.
Charlie, I've heard the 14-day between exposure and when symptoms may show up within 14 days. Is that a good number to keep in mind?
Well, yeah, on the face of it, so the incubation period ranges from two to 14 days for most diseases. We, from a public health point of view and a physiological point of view, we don't call an outbreak over four incubation periods. In fact, we are doing that in Oregon around outbreaks in long-term care facilities. They have to go 28 days without a case before the outbreak has turned closed. You'll remember that we had to do that with, I mean, in the cocktail outbreak at OSU, that the case definition for that, the outbreak went for a full year from the last identified case. And so, you know, with the delay in cases, we were basically in outbreak position for 25 months in that case. But, you know, this is one that is in your ballpark, as elected officials and the governor's ballpark, balancing the economic and social pressures against that sort of epidemiology and public health. And where that comes down, as far as the period between these phases, in the prerequisites, in the guidance, they are using 14 days. So, you know, as I said before, the prevalence of metric is a 14-day decline in hospital admissions. So that's what's been landed on in those is one incubation period.
Okay. Thank you. We can go to Danielle. Okay. Danielle Brown, do you want to add to Charlie's report?
Yes, I will try to make this short. What we are working on, aside from the reopening plan, is to coordinate the contract with Chance to get the hotel motel sheltering in place for these homeless individuals. I am, as we speak, working on the contract request form in order to get that moved forward. I have been working closely with finance and contracts to get that in place. We have mostly completed the other plan in terms of the mass sheltering plan, and now really focused on the reopening plan that Charlie has just talked about. So those are going to be the focuses moving forward for the next two weeks.
Any questions for Danielle? And I see we have Sarah Hartstein on the line. Do you have anything to add, Sarah?
I do not, thank you.
All right. I'm going to go ahead and go to Brian Lee. Okay.
Thank you for calling the Alpe Democrat House. Your business hours are Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. If you know your party's extension, you may dial us at any time. Please listen carefully and choose one of the following options.
Somebody needs to mute their microphone.
For retail applications, press 3, or news, press 4. Hi there, is there someone on the line that's calling the Board of Commissioners office right now? If you have reached us after hours, remembering, please wait.
Teresa, will you answer the phone and see if it is?
Thank you for calling News 30, we are good. Please record our call for quality assurance.
Hi, is there someone on the Board of Commissioners calling the newspaper?
For the call hours to that time.
Hi there, Bennett, are you on the phone?
Is it COVID-19? And to ensure the safety of our team.
Is there any way for the administrator to discontinue that call? Once again, nobody's showing and speaking.
Yeah, no, it's someone who's called in on the phone. It's not someone who's connected with a computer, so we can't mute them because we can't see them.
Anything a problem?
Hello?
Hello, this is Bennett. Can anybody hear me?
Hi, Bennett.
Hello, Bennett.
I can hear you.
We can hear you. We were getting a lot of background sounds from your auto attendant, so we.
I'm sorry about that. I muted my phone. Did that not make a difference?
Now it has in the last four or five seconds. Yep, it's made a difference. Thank you very much.
So should I stay unmuted, or should I go back on mute?
Well, let's see what happens if you hit mute again.
Okay.
It sounds like we're in good shape now, Bennett. So you should leave it on mute.
Yep, thank you, Bennett.
Okay. Anything else for the, oh, Health Department folks, or will, Brian Lee, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
Do you want to give us an update, how things look from your perspective?
Yes, so I'll move pretty swiftly. EOC-wise, we are supposed to kind of step in along our operations section, obviously with the Public Health Branch and Economic Development Branch is expanding significantly, mainly to support the reopening plan. Sierra Anderson and Sarah Johnson worked a lot on getting the reopening plan draft just to a place where we can start plugging in governor's guidance when we get clear guidance. The state right now does not have all the support documents that they reference, so we're still kind of at a standstill with more in-the-week details that we will need to actually reopen. So that's sort of where we left it at, is working on that with the reopening plan. We're also coordinating with the CHC, with Dr. Bradford, who is now going to be part of the EOC to coordinate testing and just get other feedback medical advice and just develop our plans more. From what we can tell, the state is going to be asking for very specific operational plans, not just are you able to do tests, but show us what your testing capacity is, demonstrate to us, show us the contracts. And so we're leveraging a lot of resources with Lynn and Lynn County, because Lynn County just did a bunch of emergency testing and investigations in the National Frozen Food. So we got some of their plans to do pop-up testing. Lincoln County has developed really good contact tracing training, as well as our health department's done that as well. So we're just trying to integrate kind of the best practices from our region, especially our three sovereign health system region, to focus on training materials and developing plans so they are operational. Because what we can tell is that they're going to want down into the weeds, that we are ready to go at a moment's notice with every level of capacity that they outlined in that prerequisite. So we hope to hear more. We're compiling questions to start asking the state to get more details, but that's kind of where we landed. And our main focus in the EOC is going to be on reopening plans and getting stuff squared away for that. And that's all I have.
Great. Any questions for Brian? Is your buddy Dave Busby on the line?
I don't think Dave is. I think he's on the city director's call right now.
Okay. Let's see, just a comment, I think Charlie talked about the coastal counties, and I think we have to make sure that we, there's the North Coast, and maybe that starts Lane County in north, and that has, can have considerable pressure from the Willamette Valley population and the South Coast folks, Douglas, Curry and Coos, who have a different timeline and different approach. So I think it's good, as commissioners, we get some information and need to make sure that you have that same information, Charlie. All right. Anything else on the EOC update?
No, that is all I have.
Great. Thank you, Brian. All right. If there's nothing else on that topic, I will close the regular board meeting and.
We just move into the public hearing.
Slide right in there, huh?
Slide it.
Okay. We will slide into the. Another baseball term. Public hearing, public hearing number one in the matter of one enact emergency ordinance number 2020, day 0295, vehicle camping. Do you want to start us off on that, Greg?
Did you read the whole script?
Right here, okay.
Did you read any of the script? I spent hours on this.
This is a wonderful script. Tuesday, May 5, 2020, at 11:00 a.m., or slightly after that, is the time set for the public hearing to consider, one, encampment of, an emergency ordinance for vehicle camping, and, two, amending the Benton County Code to add Chapter 40, vehicle camping ordinance numbers 2020, days 0295 and 0296. Pursuant to Governor Kate Brown's executive order number 20, day 16, there is no physical access to this meeting room, but this hearing is available via go-to-meeting, which was noticed in the Pervellis GT. In accordance with the governor's executive order, no oral testimony will be taken. Interested persons were encouraged to submit written or electronic testimony prior to the hearing, and we did receive numerous submissions, all of which have been provided to each board member for consideration. All submitters will be notified in writing of the final decision. The hearing procedure will be as follows. Staff will present the staff report and two board deliberations. I will ask the board if any, I will ask the board if any commissioners need to declare any bias, conflict of interest, or ex parte contacts. How's that?
Perfect.
All right. Now take it away, Greg.
All right. Good morning, commissioners. So this is our first public hearing under these new conditions, and we're going to see how this goes. So I am presenting to you today. Also with me as co-team members and presenters are Sarah Hartstein and Rebecca Taylor, and I believe Julie Arena is also here with us. So this is a public hearing considering adoption of a new chapter of the county code. I'm usually presenting regarding land use code. This is not a land use hearing. It's a hearing to consider adoption of county code, and so that hearing is conducted pursuant, not to land use regulations, but pursuant to the county charter. The new chapter of the county code would enable the county to authorize vehicle camping at religious institutions, and I'll go into that proposed code in more detail in a minute. You actually have before you two ordinances. They're identical, except that one is an emergency ordinance that would go into effect today and expire in 60 days. The other ordinance would take effect on the 61st of today and sunset or expire on December 31, 2021. You've got separate motions before you. One motion would enact that emergency ordinance. The second motion would be to conduct the first reading of the intermediate ordinance. That would then lead to a second reading of that ordinance in two weeks. We'll recap all this procedural stuff at the, at the end of my presentation, so just wanted to lay out where we're headed with this. Public testimony, as you mentioned, Chair Malone, public testimony has been received in written form only, and that's consistent with the governor's executive order regarding public hearings during COVID-19. Before I discuss in more detail the specifics of the proposed code, I'd like to ask Sarah Hartstein from our Health Department to discuss a little bit about the reasons for this, for this code proposal, both in general and specifically at this time. I just want to point out that this. I just want to point out that this proposal is not by any stretch the sum total of the county's homelessness strategy. This is one quick action that will help. And I'll also mention that at the board's direction, beginning last year, late last year, a cross-departmental team involving staff from Community Development and Health has been working on this potential code, as well as code for transitional housing more broadly. We've sought the expertise of multiple agencies and organizations, both within and outside of the county government, coordinated with City of Pervellis and others. And so this is part of a long-running process. We've just been prepared to engage in public outreach with a draft code on this vehicle camping concept, just as COVID-19 ramped up and things shut down. So I'd like to hand it over to Sarah for a moment to talk about why this is an important code for you to consider.
Thank you Greg. Good morning everyone. I just wanted to reiterate a few things that Greg has said is that this kind of cross-departmental team made up of Health Department staff and Community Development staff were already working on the vehicle camping code for religious institutions outside of city limits prior to the COVID-19 pandemic. We paused those efforts at that time because we were redeployed to respond to the pandemic and because we didn't feel like we had the ability to do the community outreach that was needed at the time. The reason why we're bringing this back up now is because we do have an immediate need for individuals to have access to stable locations to shelter in place. This is just one option, one additional option that we'd like to provide for our rural communities to allow for individuals who are in vehicles without a place to shelter in place to have that opportunity to do so, which is why we're proposing an emergency ordinance and then an interim ordinance when that expires. So one, to address the immediate need, and two, to allow for time for us to do the engagement in rural areas and with our rural churches.
Thanks Sarah. The proposal itself, the code that you have before you, as I mentioned and Sarah mentioned, would allow vehicle camping at religious institutions in unincorporated Benton County. Be a maximum of three vehicles allowed for that purpose for a religious institution. The term "vehicle" is defined in a way to include also micro shelters. The host institution would be required to provide toilet, hand washing, and trash disposal facilities at a minimum. There's a requirement for a 12-foot separation between vehicles to help with social distancing and also a 12-foot setback from property lines. There's a provision in the draft that would authorize the county to impose additional limitations or to revoke the authorization if there's a nuisance created or a threat to public health, safety, or welfare. There are some other provisions in the code, but those are the main ones. I'm happy to talk in more detail about any of the provisions. I will point out that late yesterday, I sent you a couple of modifications that we're suggesting, proposing. The first of those relates to Section 1 of the ordinance of the code, the definition of "vehicle", and it changes the second sentence of that definition to read "vehicle". Also includes a rigid-walled, readily transportable temporary sleeping unit exempt from building code and consistent with minimum guidelines issued by the Community Development Director. A church, synagogue, or other religious institution shall be responsible for ensuring vehicles meet and adhere to the minimum guidelines. So that was put in to clarify the responsibility of the host institution to ensure that the vehicle or micro shelter, to use a term that's not specifically defined, but a term of art, to ensure that that meets the guidelines that we set out. Second modification is in Section 3, just to clarify that a maximum of three vehicles for vehicle camping purposes is allowed at the registered site at any one time. We're not intending to limit church or other services to three vehicles in their parking lot. Only three vehicles for camping purposes. So those are the modifications. I'd also like to address a couple of points that have come up in the public testimony that's been submitted so far. First, those regarding this county code applying only outside of cities. As Sarah mentioned, this applies to unincorporated parts of the county. That's because that's the area we have jurisdiction for, that's the area in which we can authorize this use per state statute. Cities would have to adopt their own code similarly to authorize vehicle camping at religious institutions within city limits. That's per the state statute that authorizes it. Another question about the size limit and why only at churches. Again, this authorization, this authority to the local jurisdiction comes from state statute. It provides the means for jurisdictions to adopt this particular use at a certain threshold and not have it be considered a land use, not have to modify the zoning code. It's allowed through state statute only as an accessory use to a church and it has to be kept under the maximum of three vehicles as defined in the statute, or as identified in the statute. The third item I want to mention, one of the testifiers wrote in about fire suppression, encouraging means of fire suppression to be required on-site. That could and likely will be part of the guidance that we are going to include to prospective hosts, religious institutions that intend to host vehicle camping. It could also be added as a provision to this code if the board feels that's appropriate. If you are inclined to go that route, I would encourage further discussion of it and possibly considering that for the intermediate ordinance rather than the emergency ordinance, to get the emergency ordinance into effect. Okay, I'm going to pause any, I do have a little more to discuss, but I want to ask if there are any questions from the commissioners about the code itself.
I think you can continue Greg.
Very good. Thank you. All right, I want to finish up by talking about the procedures that will accompany this, this code, once it goes, if it goes into effect, once it goes into effect. There will be a registration form that religious institutions would fill out and submit to Community Development Department. We would ask for a site plan and emergency contact information, along with some other pertinent details. The emergency contact information would be provided to emergency responders, as well as be available to provide to members of the public if there is a concern, like neighbors, for example, if they call in with a concern about the site and needing to contact somebody in charge. We're also preparing a support manual for the religious institutions that are looking to host vehicle camping. That manual would have recommendations from various agencies to ensure the churches are aware and prepared to host individuals on their property. The manual, for example, recommends that churches communicate with their neighbors before and during the hosting of people on their property. We're also preparing a frequently asked questions document that would be available online to the public that will address questions both that the churches might have and that neighboring property owners might have. Rebecca or Sarah, is there any other elements of the procedures that we should mention? All right. And then, okay, so I'll just mention finally that we did receive written comments. I think there were a total of 11, if I counted correctly. And I hope you've had a chance to review them. If not, feel free to. And then, again, regarding motions for approval. In my email sent to you, 408, yesterday afternoon, are updated motions that I would suggest you work from if that's the direction you choose to go. Any questions, comments, county council, feel free to chime in. I know he doesn't need that permission, but giving him some anyway.
Well, I had a couple of comments Greg, and I appreciate you bringing up the concern about fire. That was one of the letters, emails that came in. And I appreciated how thoughtful, in general, the correspondence was. And so I think that that does make sense to consider that for the second motion, intermediate term. But make sure that that is a consideration. One comment I had that I don't think went, I think it was just to me, but asking, well, why just churches? And I think you've explained the legal basis, but also churches can provide service and the county also joins in that effort, so it's not just a place to...
Thank you for calling the Augnate Democrat Herald. Normal business hours are Monday through Friday, 8:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. If you know your party's extension, you may dial it at any time. Please listen carefully and choose one of the following options. Press 1 to advertise. Press 2 to advertise. Press 3. Hey Bennett, is that you? Press 4. Press 5.
Yes.
So Bennett, we can hear everything going on in the background regarding your auto attendant? And when you're speaking Bennett, we cannot hear you either.
Hey, what would you like me to do?
There you go. Whatever you did. Oh, no. It came back. So Bennett, we're going to need you to hang up and call back in or figure another way to access it because it's too disruptive.
Okay, I'm sorry.
All right. Before I was so rudely interrupted, just making sure that it's clear why this is an issue specifically to churches and part of it is access to many services that the church and the county can provide. So I think that's an important part of the picture, that it isn't just a place to park. Vance?
I've got a couple of things. So on that topic, the statute that gives the county authority to implement this ordinance is ORS 203.082, and it specifically authorizes counties to allow temporary vehicle camping on churches, religious institutional properties, and synagogues. So we are extremely limited by what the legislature has granted us as our authority. So that's one aspect. Two other things, Greg did a really good job of short-circuiting my spiel. Thank you very much Greg, by providing all kinds of information. But there's two things I think I want to pass along to the board. One is that in our notice of the meeting, of the hearing, we specified that written submissions must be received by 5:00 p.m. yesterday. There were two written submissions that were received after 5:00 that have not been forwarded to you. They were not received in time, so they're not part of your consideration of these two ordinances. You didn't feel it would be fair to those folks who might have otherwise chosen to try to submit a written testimony after 5:00 o'clock, if we allowed you to receive those. Second is, I know that there are a couple of pieces of testimony that you did receive that relate to the first congregational church's safe camp. And I want to be very clear on what the emergency ordinance and the interim ordinance allow. They allow vehicle camping on property that is currently zoned for church activities or religious purposes. Currently, the congregational church's property that joins or abuts, it's the property where the church proper is located, is inside the county's jurisdiction, but it is not zoned yet for religious activities. That is the subject of the conditional use application, if you recall, that the church has submitted. So at this point, if the board decides it wishes to enact the emergency ordinance and subsequently the interim ordinance, that church property that is inside the county's jurisdiction would not qualify to...
Testimonies given, and that's the number I have. And so the two that came in after that, we haven't seen.
That's correct.
And so the number is 11. Like I said a little earlier, I appreciated the thoughtful nature. It actually came pretty close to evenly split between strongly supporting this measure and I think some, definitely some opposed. But I appreciate the comment about making part of this package is communication with neighbors. I think that's a critical part going forward.
And if I could just add one more aspect, and this is an unusual piece of information for the board because we so seldom put forward an emergency ordinance. Our charter requires for enactment of an emergency ordinance that it be approved unanimously. So just know that if it's a two-to-one vote, that particular emergency ordinance is not enacted.
And that requirement is, comes with the emergency ordinance?
Correct. Not the interim, but the emergency ordinance only, yes. Like I said, it's a little bit of a different animal, but we very seldom encounter so. Just wanted to make sure that you, all three, are aware of that unique requirement.
Any further questions for Greg or Vance? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
I would move to enact ordinance number 2020 0295, an emergency ordinance for vehicle camping at religious institutions effective May 5, 2020, and expiring July 4, 2020.
And Zane, just to clarify, that is the version as amended by Greg yesterday afternoon?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I may be mistaken, but I thought the amendment included with the modifications in Sections 1 and 2 as discussed at the hearing.
to sections one and two as discussed at the hearing?
Yes.
That's exactly what I said, Erica, isn't it?
Exactly.
I'm sorry. No, I'm just reading off of yesterday's crib sheet, and so yes, that is what I intend. Thank you for that further clarification.
Thanks, Erica. Do I hear a second? You need to turn your mic on.
Second.
Her lips were moving, but nothing was coming out.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor of the emergency ordinance number 2020-095. Say aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous, Vance.
Perfect. Okay, so now it needs to be read. Do you want to read that, Commissioner Malone, or would you like me to read that?
Why don't you read it, Vance?
I thought I'd give you an easy out. All right. Before the Board of Commissioners for the State of Oregon, for the County of Benton, in the matter of adopting Benton County Code Chapter 40, vehicle camping at religious institutions and declaring an emergency, ordinance number 2020-0295. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Benton County ordains as follows: Short title: Adoption of Benton County Code Chapter 40 Regarding Vehicle Camping at Religious Institutions. This ordinance will take effect immediately, and it expires at midnight on July 4 pursuant to our charter requirements. Now, there should be a second motion for the interim ordinance.
I would like to see the emergency, I mean, the second ordinance, the interim ordinance, include a requirement for a fire extinguisher with each vehicle or micro shelter as we move forward. But other than that, I'm happy to move to conduct the first reading of ordinance number 2020-0296, adopting Charter 40, Chapter 40, I think I have this right, of the Benton County Code, vehicle camping at religious institutions, with the amendments that were presented by Greg Barret today.
All right. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Do we need any discussion? Okay. All in favor of ordinance number 2020-0296, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, first reading?
Take it away, Vance.
For the Board of Commissioners for the State of Oregon, for the County of Benton, in the matter of adopting Benton County Code Chapter 40, vehicle camping at religious institutions, ordinance number 2020-0296. Now therefore, the Board of Commissioners of Benton County ordain as follows: Short title: Adoption of Benton County Code Chapter 40 Regarding Vehicle Camping at Religious Institutions. So because this is our regular ordinance procedure, we'll come back on May 19th for a second reading. If the second reading occurs, this ordinance, because we stipulated a different effective date, will take place 1201, July 5, 2020. So we'll hold that second reading on the 19th. Greg, we need to have the amendment that includes the fire extinguishers into this code and post it today so that we meet our 14-day requirement by charter.
We're on it.
Oh, heck, yes, you are.
Well, Greg, I really, you alluded to that you've been working on this issue for a long time, and I appreciate the thoughtful approach and coming out with a good product. So appreciate you and your helpers' efforts.
It's been a huge team effort. Thank you.
I would love to add my voice to that, and also to acknowledge the correspondence that we received. This is definitely not a solution to address homelessness. This is a solution to a problem now with respect to needing to have a place for people to shelter in place during this pandemic. I am looking forward to seeing how this interim solution works. We will be collecting data, whether it's called law enforcement or code or whatever, and look forward to seeing how it might be modified as we move forward to be a permanent solution or not at all. And I'm really hoping that we don't see the level of housing instability once the rental moratorium is ended, that would lead to many, many more people needing to be residing in their vehicles. But if that is the case, at least we have a little bit of a pressure release valve so that people have a place to park, especially if they're part of a religious community. So thank you for all your work as staff. I really appreciate it. We know what we do isn't perfect, but we have to keep experimenting and try and find solutions that are humane and support everyone in our community.
Well, and one of the emails that was in opposition to this was because it wasn't a bold enough effort, that it was more of a Band-Aid, and he wanted a bigger solution, a year-round shelter. But I think this is, needs to have been done, and hopefully will be one of the ways we address the homeless problem. Any other questions or comments on this issue? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and slide back into our regular board meeting. If memory serves me correctly, we finished the EOC discussions. Is that correct?
Commissioner, we did receive the updates that we had scheduled for today. I do have one additional update for the commissioners before we move on to the last topic on the agenda. That update that I have for the commissioners is, I was notified this morning by Mark Shepherd, the city manager for Corvallis, that the city council did vote last night in support of paying $9,225 to support the hygiene center for the first 30 days, meaning from May 15 until June 15, which matches the county's contribution as well during that time period. So that is the only additional update I have for you.
Well, great, because that's been a shared effort, and I'm glad to see that effort continue.
Agreed.
All right. So that finishes that topic?
That's correct.
And now we are on number nine. Other? Do you have some other for us, Joe?
I do not.
Okay. Any other other?
Proclamation?
What's that?
Oh, we did those last.
You did it, okay. Just checking. Didn't want Erica to jump on us.
We were actually ahead of schedule, Vance. All right. Seeing no other questions or comments, I will close the board meeting. Thank you very much for all your efforts, and we'll see many of you Thursday at 10:00. Thank you.